Can I have a motion to open the meeting, please?
Summary report.
Second?
Second.
Original site.
The podium's open? I just logged in.
I'll just do whatever you're telling me to do anyways.
Okay, can everybody please stand for the eligible agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Going to open up public input number one. A couple of summary of public input participation. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Speakers have up to three minutes. Speakers will address remarks to the president. Speakers will conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Speakers will not address personnel or students. If a speaker wants to speak a second time, they may speak at public input two. And the board president has the right to discontinue public input at any time. At the podium, there is a sheet of paper. Please print your first and last name so we can have it for the record. Is there anyone who would like to speak for public input number one? So we're going to move into the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Andy. So I'm just going to briefly touch upon two topics. The first is a quick update on Marston. So the school district received a letter from the town dated January 21st, where they laid out terms and conditions for the school districts to move forward with the town regarding the acquisition of the Marston lots. And so I've been in touch with the town several times. And the goal is to turn over the requested documents to the town Wednesday, Thursday of this week. And again, there have been multiple discussions making sure that the documents that we're preparing are indeed the documents that they would like to see. So hopefully, after we turn the documents in on Wednesday, we can provide an update to the community soon thereafter.
Does anybody have any questions or like to add anything to that? No?
So the second topic that I want to talk about is the draft 2023-2024 calendar. And you have three options in front of you, option A, B, and C. And just to give you a little background, each year, the way this works is that BOCES sends us a draft calendar. And for the most part, the majority of districts work off those calendars. And the calendar expert in the district is Mr. Malone. I've watched him navigate that for years along with Mr. Domcheck. So this year, I sat down with both of them and we came up with a couple of options. And then later, I guess it was later last week, we met with a board member and the president of TASS just to make sure that we were exploring all of the reasonable options. At the end of that meeting, we created one additional option, which is before you this evening. So with that, I'd just like to provide a quick overview of each option and then open it up for discussion. So option number, or option A, is the draft that most closely resembles the BOCES calendar and the pertinent parts of this are that you get, or that the district takes one week off for Christmas, three days prior, or in and around Thanksgiving. You will notice that in April, it's not your traditional setup. Good Friday and Easter Monday are recognized. But then, I think in a nod to Passover and Jewish holidays, the last week in April is off as well. That option has two snow days, I believe, Mr. Malone, built in, is that correct?
Correct.
Option B is a little different in that what the school, what we did is we changed a few things. We took away April 1st, which is Easter Monday, if you will. We also took away May 24th. And we also switched December 22nd, which was previously a day off. Those days in combination enabled us to extend the winter break an additional week. So that now, the last day of school would be Friday, December 22nd, and students would not return until school until January 8th. And in this scenario, I believe there is one snow day built in, is that correct, Mr. Malone?
Correct.
Option C is sort of a middle ground, where we didn't take two weeks off for the winter break. What we did is we added on two additional days. And the way we did that was to access some of the days that I previously talked about. So that now, you would get the 22nd off of December, which is the Friday before the break. So in this scenario, students, their last day of classes would be Thursday, the 21st, and they would return to school on Thursday, January 4th. Some of the benefits of switching the calendars provides more flexibility for parents. For parents who intend to travel, obviously. Not working directly around the holidays and having a little room on either side makes travel cheaper. In terms of contractual considerations, we worked it through with the teachers. I checked with the bus drivers' union. We are free to pursue any of these three options. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board to discuss.
Go ahead, Alex.
All right, I was the unnamed board member.
Alex is the chairperson for the calendar committee.
I asked to be on the calendar committee, which there apparently wasn't one. So I asked Sandy to create one. So my personal thought was that it would be very nice to have a two-week vacation over the Christmas break, which we have had, I think it's like once every eight years or so because of how the Christmas and New Year's fall. But I thought it'd be nice to see if there's a way to do that. There is. I personally like option B, but also, Mr. Malone, who knows a lot more about this than me, pointed out there might be some benefits to going with option C, which is kind of a way to extend that Christmas break on both ends of it without, you know, the two-week holiday could potentially be a burden for some families, if, either if you have young kids and you're working, or some folks who work in another district or not this one. So I think both B and C would be, either one of those would be good. And I think both students, teachers, administrators, staff, I think everyone would appreciate the longer break over the Christmas vacation. So I think either B or C would be, would be good.
So what happens to our kids who go to BOCES?
We would transport them.
So the bus drivers would not, they would not have off? They would have to walk.
Which is permissible in their contract.
Yeah, yeah, the contract would allow you, but, okay.
And I did speak to the transportation director and her opinion was that there would be no issue with having bus drivers wanting to work because of the way their compensation works.
And my idea tonight was to just kind of start a discussion about this, get some feedback. We're not looking to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, I think the timeline for a decision realistically is by early March.
Well, I think one thing I'm noticing is that in B and C, there's no Easter Monday off, which I, as a Jewish person, it's not something that I, is relevant to my life. But I just want to know if that's important to people. I think that's some feedback we probably just need to, to get. I'd imagine people are traveling on a Sunday for Easter. Coming back on a Sunday also is hard, so.
I just had a question. Is Easter Monday, is that something that was put on this year because the spring break was not around Easter? Or do we typically take off Easter Monday?
I think it's on this year because the BOCES calendar, the spring break at the latter part of April. So that way, like you mentioned, you get that Easter Monday off, and therefore, that's more easy to travel.
But on the years where the spring break ended on Easter Sunday?
We often have that Monday off.
We had the Monday off or we did not?
Typically, we would sometimes break it for the week four.
And then we get the Monday off.
Yeah, I think clearly the complication is that Passover and Easter are at different times of the month.
Right.
Brian, I was just wondering if Mr. Malone had any other thoughts, since he has so much more experience historically with the calendar, of its pros and cons?
Yeah, I actually think all, all three options would work for the district. I like how Jeff and Alex summarized, you know, the difference between option B and C. Now, option B supports that along with the break. C does as well, but I think for families with younger children, knowing that they can be in school for some of those days at the time after, after New Year's, maybe having ages for those families. If the family had to travel far, they can make that one decision.
Ron?
I think, I mean, it's just off top. I like option B because of the extended Christmas holiday and travel times. But I think B or C looks good, yeah.
To the extent we go with a C, if the zero snow days are used, schools are closed on April 19th. One day is closed on April 19th. What if we switch that to Easter Monday?
It had no snow days?
So no, so schools closed on April 1st.
I think you, well, you know this, I think we're rolling the dice a little bit.
But we haven't had a snow day in April, have we?
No, but it's what you have in January and February, and you have two or three.
But when you have one and you give it back already in April, then if we have a snow day thereafter?
Right, but what's the likelihood of having a snow day in April? Have we had one before?
We've had them for sure, not in the past, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, something to consider, though.
Yeah, I mean, just, just trying to think about how to enable it.
So we should talk about that, too. The B and C have fewer snow, like they have one instead of two?
Correct.
So, and, and I guess we now have the flexibility when it snows, instead of having a snow day, we could just have a remote day, but the downside is it's a childhood, cherished. You know, waking up and finding out there's no school.
Can't drive to school, but you can get to the hill to go down on a slide. That was always the doubt, yeah.
Yeah.
What would a remote snow day look like if we were?
So there would, there would be instruction. I think it's important to recognize, and the TASS president brought this up in our discussions, and we actually said this during the pandemic, that although we did our best with remote instruction, it doesn't resemble what happens in school. So it's incomplete at best. Attendance isn't great. You can just sort of half-check in, half-check out, like those things.
I'm fairly indifferent. It's good that we're starting the conversation so we can get feedback and hopefully anybody who loves listening.
How do you feel about those, if the kids who are offered opportunities with the ones who choose to go to BOCES have to go to school? That's a tough one.
That is tough.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, that's a fair point. How many students do that?
Ranges years anywhere from six to about 17. I think this year we got about 13.
So a real number.
Yeah, decent number.
Something to think about.
Okay, Brian, do you have any questions?
Yeah, we had talked about this previously, so.
Okay. Okay.
That does it for the superintendent's report. And the principal's report, Ms. Carrero is ill and Mr. Guyan, who is scheduled to present in a place called Insect. So there'll be no middle school, high school principals report, but Mr. Malone is here. Good evening. Just wanted to, once again, remind families of some of the younger children in our community that we will hold a pre-K orientation program on Wednesday, March 1st. And that'll be at 6:30 PM at the South Harbor Learning Center. This is an opportunity for parents of children who will reach age four by December 1st of 2023 to learn about our full-day pre-K program here in South Harbor. And then the following Wednesday, the 8th, we will be hosting an orientation for families of children that will be moving to our kindergarten, which is housed at the elementary school. And that orientation will, again, be March 8th, 6:30 PM in the elementary gym that will begin. Tomorrow, our Good Morning South Harbor Club, which is a group of students that help us with important announcements at morning program. They will be presenting the idea of our Super Bowl. This is a big and longstanding tradition at the elementary school. Obviously, the big football game is this coming Sunday. But in South Harbor, we celebrate a Super Bowl on the Friday before. So this Friday, students will be encouraged to come to school with an item, a canned item, soup or vegetables, something, something of that like. These items will all get donated to our local food pantry. And we have a little fun with it because the kids make their pick whether or not the winner will be the Kansas City Chiefs or the Philadelphia Eagles. And I think we, we've been, we've been correct in our prediction all but one year. So our record's pretty good. We had a little fun with that, but it's an important service learning opportunity. And I do, I do want members of the community to mark their calendars. It's a ways off, but we will be hosting our fifth grade wax museum project on May 24th. And the reason I'm mentioning it tonight is because right after the February break, the fifth graders will begin to get into this extensive project. The wax museum at the elementary school is kind of a chapstone project of sorts. It's really the culmination of all the work that goes on at the elementary school. I'm sure there's really get into it. And it, and it ends with a wonderful day of wax museum where they actually take on the persona of somebody from history. And we invite the entire community to be a part of that. A good one to get on everyone's calendar.
Are we going to try and have that around the track again?
We are again. We did that outside during the pandemic and it was well-received, so we're going to go with that again.
Last year was beautiful.
Yeah, it was great. That's it from the elementary school.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Malone.
Thank you.
Ms. Bushimi, you are up.
Okay. So we are going to continue with our budget presentations. And tonight, we are going to look at our revenue projections. And we're going to look at our transportation budget, our facilities budget, and our technology budget. And we work very closely with Mr. Fisher and Ms. Stevens and Mr. Wilkin. And they did a really great job in really going into all of their account codes and, you know, detailing exactly where we need, what we need to increase and what we could remain flat. And there's a few areas that you'll see that we were able to decrease. So, so based on all the information we currently have, our current year budget is $45,993,327. So for the current year, we had a budget-to-budget increase of 2.5%. And we had a tax levy increase of 2.5%. And that was under our tax levy limit of 2.75%. So going into next year, we're looking at a proposed budget of $48,178,010. That is a much higher budget-to-budget increase. And our tax levy limit is also much higher this year. Our tax levy limit right now stands at 4.16%. And we'll go through some of the factors as to why that increased so much from year to year. But we are generating additional state aid. We also have additional revenue coming in from other sources. And we are going to tap into some of our reserves to support the budget next year. So we feel that we can move forward next year and have a tax levy increase of 2%, which is actually lower than the current year. And we'll explain some of those increases and decreases on the next slide. But the budget is balanced. And when I say it's balanced, I mean that we do have every single revenue that we have is realistic, that is supporting the budget so far. And if you look at the top of the slide, this is what makes up that $48 million down at the bottom. On the top of the slide is all of our state aid numbers. The, the executive budget came out, and that was on February 1st. Governor Hope Holle released her executive budget numbers. And you can see that there were definitely some increases in some of those areas. We did receive the minimal foundation aid increase of 3%. So our foundation aid is going to go up roughly about $40,000, $41,000. Universal pre-kindergarten. So the current year is the first year we ever received this money. When we were developing the current year's budget, we didn't even know whether or not we would be able to collect the $113,400. We didn't know if our program, if we were able to go through the application process and we would get proof of those funds. But I'm glad to report that we did go through the application process and our grant for the funding for the pre-K program, the $113,400, was approved for the current year. For next year, the funding increased significantly. But this funding, I just want everyone to know, is a per-pupil fund, funding. And this is based on $5,400 per pupil. So we actually, that would be eight, 46 students. And we currently don't even have 46 students in the program. We have about 37 of our students in the program. So we, this would be the maximum funding. So really, once a legislative run comes out, when the, when the state budget is adopted, we'll get new state aid runs. We're probably going to have to reduce this number from 248 down to 200,000, which would be really the realistic amount that we would collect. Unless we did have a huge influx of students going into next year's program. The other increase we see is in BOCES aid. And you'll see BOCES aid, transportation aid, software library, these are all reimbursable aids. And this is aid based on what we spent, what we're spending. And we are spending more money at BOCES. We're spending more money in really Mr. Fisher's area, in technology. So last year, we, we showed that our BOCES accounts for all of our software have increased because we're trying to get back aid, which we get about 30% aid back from BOCES. And we're also trying to be in compliance with ED Law 2D, which was the new, well, it's not that new, but a couple of years ago, it was passed. And the law had to do with protecting personal identifiable information. So BOCES has a system in place where they purchase their software from vendors and they have contracts in place that would basically keep us in compliance. So we moved a lot of our purchases to BOCES. So that's why you'll see that we are getting more BOCES aid back from that additional spending. All of the other state aid areas are remaining relatively flat. So now, if you look right underneath here, you'll see we have pilot payments that we collect, which is staying relatively flat. For the current year, we budgeted $159,000 coming in. These are payment in lieu of taxes for some businesses in South Harbor. And for next year, we're just going to increase that by a couple of thousand dollars. Our student driver's education fees, our state remaining flat. We may not even hit that $10,000 mark this year. Non-resident tuition is something that we'll focus on on another slide. But you'll see, for the current year, we budgeted $1.5 million to come in from non-resident tuition. And that was an increase of $500,000 from last year. So last year, we budgeted a million dollars. This year, we brought that up another $500,000 to 1.5. Next year, we feel confident enough that we are, we do have enough students coming in this school year that we could bring that number up again, another $500,000. So that's really positive move in the right direction for us. And that does support a lot of our budget increase. Charges for shared services, this is really our transportation contract, and we are going to keep that flat. We're not going to increase that. And then we also have grants, interest, miscellaneous revenues. We're going to increase that by about $75,000 because not only are we paying more interest on the borrowing side, we're collecting more interest on the, on our funds from the banks, from whatever money we have in the bank. The interest rates have gone up, so we could increase that. So total revenues before our tax levy and applied fund balance has increased overall by $781,665, which is really great. And this is just, and this is a huge increase from last year. Last year, we actually only had $3.5 million budgeted, you know, right here in this yellow. So this is really a one and a half million dollar increase to, in revenues to support our budget without having, having to increase our tax levy. So we talked a little bit back in December when I went through our fund balance and our reserve balances. And we talked about how we were going to start appropriating money from our retirement contribution fund. So this is $500,000 that we're going to be taking out of our reserves, taking out of the retirement contribution fund to pay for retirement ERS expenses that are in the budget. So the ERS expense, which we actually went through at the last meeting, the end of January, is more than $500,000. So we're going to pull those funds out of the reserve to pay for that, for that expenditure line item. And then we have appropriated fund balance. Appropriative fund balance really.
Can I ask a question? In doing that, in taking that $500,000, what does that, does that partly account for the differential between the allowable tax cap limit and the fact that the percentage increase is 2%?
No, it actually has no, it has no effect on our tax levy limit. I think when we went through our reserves, we just felt that, we looked at the balances and we thought that some might have been a little bit higher than others. And we thought that this would be a good time to maybe bring that balance down and also help our taxpayers by keeping the tax levy much lower. So we will definitely be able to keep this appropriation in there for the next few budget years, definitely. You'll see that. The, the appropriated fund balance is surplus money from the current year. So the current year, when we end the current year, we're going to end up with surplus funds for various reasons. One of the reasons will be for the non-resident tuition that comes in, that we didn't expect, that we would have our numbers go up that significantly. Another reason is we have the difference between outgoing teachers that retire and incoming teachers. So there's definitely a difference there in salaries and benefits. And there's many other reasons why we end the year with surplus funds. But what we're going to do is we're going to earmark a little under $500,000 of that surplus funds. And we're going to, that $500,000 will support next year's budget. And we're also going to say, out of that $500,000, $300,000 will be used as the funding source for a transfer of capital. We want to try to address some of the health and safety items that are currently on our visual building section report and some of the projects that need to be included in our long-range facilities plan. And one way to do this would be transferring some of those funds to the capital fund. But by earmarking surplus to pay for that, we don't have any taxpayer impact at all. And we'll talk about that a little further in a later slide. So here's the general fund tax levy. So the current year's tax levy is $41,333,873. We're going to increase that by 2% next year. And we're going to actually get additional tax levy of $826,677 to support our budget. And I think, I touched a little bit on this the last time, but we did look at tax bills. We did look at, as part of South Hampton Tax Bill, the Town of East Hampton Tax Bill. The assessed values have gone up significantly. And based on the assessed values, the Town of South Hampton tax rate did not increase at all by, by what we thought would increase this year, which was 2.5%. That increase was much lower, the tax rate. And the Town of East Hampton's tax rate was a little higher, but it still wasn't at that 2.5% level. So even if it were an increase of 2% based on your home's assessed value, if it stays the same, if it doesn't increase, your tax rate will probably showing a decrease. So you, you may not even feel the 2% going into next year. And then you'll see, this is basically, everything adds up to our budget-to-budget increase of $2,184,000. And that's the 4.75%. So this is our property tax levy limit. And really, based on any of the factors in this calculation, the levy limit could go up and down significantly. So for '21, '22, our levy limit is only 1%. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, our levy limit is only one point four nine percent. And the reason for that was because we actually had less of a capital exclusion going into twenty-one, twenty-two, because we had less debt service that we were paying. So that really brought down our levy limit for that year. Last year, our levy limit was two point seven five percent. And we also had a lower capital exclusion. Um, but the tax base growth factor was higher than most districts. And also the uh, levy growth factor was, was two percent. So this levy growth factor, this is what everyone calls the two percent number. This is, this is our cap. Um, basically, if inflation is any, anything over two percent, we still elect with the two percent tax levy uh, growth factor. Um, if the, if inflation is less than two percent, then it is a lesser amount. So last year, we were looking at inflation of four point seven percent, and it was capped at two percent. This year, we actually, they, they calculated an eight percent inflation rate. And the levy growth factor was still capped at two percent. So if you go through all of the numbers, the ins and outs, you'll see that our pilots receivable had stayed roughly the same. Our general fund capital tax levy of one point three six eight and one point three seven one has stayed relatively the same. So the big change is our tax base growth factor, which this is over two percent. So we have the highest tax base growth factor of any other school district on Long Island. And um, that basically means our tax base is growing. We have more brick and mortar construction in our district percentage-wise than any other district. So we were able to increase our tax levy by the two point one seven percent right off the bat because of our growth factor. Um, and then the levy growth factor of two percent. So-
So can I ask a question about that? Doesn't that also mean that the reven- our revenues are going up even without any increase?
No, because our tax levy is set. So it's just the tax levy is being spread out amongst more taxpayers.
Okay, but if- But the bit of the value of the base is going up and the tax is at a percentage, doesn't the revenue go up?
No, so if my, if my um, if my tax levy is a hundred thousand dollars, it should, and it's getting divided amongst a hundred taxpayers, then, then it would be, you know, whether or not it was just a thousand dollar taxpayer. But if it was being divided amongst a hundred and fifty taxpayers, then the amount per taxpayer would be less. So that's why a lot of, a lot of people in the district whose homes, the such values are not increasing, they're actually seeing that their taxes are not increasing. Their taxes are staying the same. Even though we're collecting tax levy from them every year, it's being spread out amongst more taxpayers, the same amount.
But the assessments are going up in the town.
The assessed value is going up. So the tax levy itself, so next year, um, I'm sorry. So next year, we're going to go out with a tax levy of forty-two million one hundred and fifty thousand five fifty. That does not change, no matter what the assessed values are.
That's not my question. If the assessed values go up, the amount that people pay goes up?
The tax rate-
Without us increasing the rate.
Not, no, because tax rate per one thousand will go down. So if you take, if you take the forty-two million and you divide it amongst more assessed value, the tax rate actually decreases.
Two percent is coming off our budget, so it's a hard number.
I understand that.
And then the spread of place-
It's not, it, the tax is on a per thousand dollars of assessed value.
Yeah.
But everyone's, if your house is worth a hundred dollars or two hundred, you're getting assessed more.
Yeah.
And your rate is going-
And that's what I'm saying.
But there's not that, so yes, your tax is going up in that situation. You're going to see a tax increase when your assessed value goes up on an existing house. So the answer is yes.
If your assessed value goes up, you're going to see a tax increase. You may or may not see a tax increase. I've seen some tax bills where the assessed value went up, but because the tax rate didn't go up by the same amount, your taxes stayed flat.
In the town of Southampton?
Yes, in the town of Southampton. So I, but, so you may have a home where that person did absolutely no improvements to the home and their assessed value has not changed year to year. And if their assessed value has not changed year to year, their tax rate is actually going to be less than what it was-
His point, his point is if your assessed value goes up, you're going to pay more taxes.
You're going to pay more taxes depending on if the tax rate is going up at the same, at the same degree.
It's going up generally. You're not going to see that, you're going to be taxed. Well, mine's never stayed flat or gone down, nor has anyone I know. It's going up.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell you, I, I have- That their taxes are actually stay the same. Because their assessed value is not increasing the same um, percentage rate as their tax rate has increased. So um, so that two percent, definitely, if your house is going to be valued more, you know, the assessed values may be higher for your house, depending on what the tax rate, you probably will see a tax increase. But probably not two percent.
And Southampton's changing this year, right?
The Southampton's did make a change, they did. So your, your home is not valued at a hundred percent of its assessed value now. Um, it's seventy-nine percent. So a home that was once around six hundred and twenty-five thousand might be assessed at now eight hundred and fifty thousand. Um, but still, depending on how much the tax rate went up or down, you, you still may not see a, a huge increase. And I could, I could probably, um, there is a presentation that I'm going to do on um, the effects of the tax levy increase on taxpayers. So when I do that presentation, I'll try to put some examples up so that everyone could understand what the impact really is. Um, but for now, we're going to assume that all these sets values are not changing and they are staying the same. And if they are staying the same, we're going to say that for now, your tax levy um, may increase by, by two percent going into next year, which is, which is lower than the current year. So the current year's tax levy increase was two and a half percent. Um, I do want to just bring you to the right hand of the slide. And this is all of our capital tax levy exclusion. And we exclude um, to the tax levy, we have on the top, this is all of our debt service payment. And on the bottom, we are responsible for some of the capital costs that BOSI, so we add that in as an exclusion. And then we have here a transfer to capital, and this is for bathroom renovations that we're going to talk about. This is three hundred thousand. Um, but because we also have three hundred thousand here as appropriated fund balance, this is, this is the wash. And that's why it doesn't factor into this one point four, I'm sorry, this four point one six percent. Um, but year to year, our general fund cap, our general fund tax levy exclusion for the current year was one million three sixty-eight, two forty-eight. And going into next year, it would be almost flat at one million three seventy-one, eight ninety-six. So non-resident tuition, um, this was always a surprise to me, just going in and looking at the numbers and trying to project what we're going to collect next year. So um, going into the current year, so when we were developing the current year's budget, twenty-two, twenty-three, and we said that um, we, we felt that we would collect the one point five million dollars, this was based on seventy-seven students that attended. So for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we had seventy-seven students attend, twenty-seven currently placed, forty-two from Wayne Scott and eight from Sagaponic. We looked at that list of students and we, we, we basically moved them all forward, agreed. So if they were, of course, in twelfth grade, we removed them from the list. Um, if they were a Wayne Scott or Sagaponic student in K to three, we took them off our list. And then everybody else, we assumed, would still be attending um, schools this year. So when we did the current year budget, we actually were projecting that seventy-four students would attend. And based on that seventy-four students, we budgeted the one point five million. Because you could see seventy-seven students attended the year earlier and we collected two million. So we said, let's bring it up by half a mil. What we actually have attended students this year, we have ninety-two. So we have thirty-one currently placed, fifty-one from Wayne Scott and ten from Sagaponic. So this just blew the budget out of the water, because we now are projecting to collect two million four hundred and seventeen thousand. And we budgeted one point five billion. So we're going to have at least nine hundred thousand at the end of the year in um, in surplus on the revenue side. Um-
Just, can I just make a quick point related to that? That Ms. Carrier, Mr. Malone and myself, along with Ms. Rodriguez Mora and Mr. Tardif, we're revisiting these numbers, so we're making sure that when these requests come in, it's not going to take away from the quality of the program. So there have been times in the past, most notably during COVID, where we put a cap on it at the elementary school, because we thought we were not equipped with the space limitations, social distancing to accommodate. Um, but we feel that we can accommodate these numbers.
Was there anything specific with Wayne Scott? Seems to be a lot of growth coming from there.
They must have had an influx of, of students, families moving in. Yeah, because that was a huge increase just over the year, as you could see, just going from twenty all the way now to fifty-one for the current year. Um, and-
East Hampton, Sag Harbor, so it'd be the same amount of kids, it's just picking more Sag Harbor changes.
And we've also had, and, and, you know, and they, they do see, we're, we're in the district, we're busting those children. So they do see our buses, they do see Sag Harbor, you know, around the neighborhood. Um, we, when we look at what we've been budgeting in the past compared to what we collected, there have been years where we didn't collect everything that we thought we were going to collect. You know, you can see the sixty-three thousand in here. But um, for next year, what we did was, we did the same thing that we did for this year. We took the ninety-two students, we put them on a list. Anybody who was in twelfth grade this year, we took them off. Anybody who was basically K three from Sagaponic and Wayne Scott, we removed those students. And then we came up with um, a real, a, a good estimate of thirty-three students. We feel we're going to have thirty-three students come back to us next year. And um, we felt that increasing that revenue budget by five hundred thousand up to two million was reasonable, based on all the information we currently have.
And you have that lot where it says total tuition received or projected, does the or projected just refer to the current?
Yeah, the projected refer, all of these are actuals, these are all fiscal years that are closed. And this is current year. So, and it always may go up or down, because we do have students that leave mid-year, and we do prorate their tuition. And then we have students who come in mid-year and we collect from them. So it's always a plus or minus. But this is what we're projecting right now, um, based on all the current information. So-
And all, nothing's changed in terms of like, what schools have the right to go come here like-
No, so all the contracts, all agreements are the same.
Yes, we have contracts with Sagaponic and Wayne Scott now going out to, I believe it's twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, or maybe even be twenty-five, twenty-six, I have to go back. But it's a two and a half percent increase. So this is based on a two and a half percent increase to our current tuition rates.
Which is what?
Um, I believe they're twenty, twenty-six thousand for um, six through twelve. And it's probably around twenty-two for, for uh, pre-K, well, K through five, and then the pre-K rate's much lower. But um, I can get those exact numbers too. Uh, the shared transportation services, so you'll, you, I did say that we did not increase the budget for our shared transportation contracts. So um, we budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand that we were going to receive from shared transportation with these other districts, Sagaponic, Wayne Scott and Bridge Hampton. And for the current year, um, we are, we have contracts signed for about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So we definitely have contracts in place, more than what we budgeted for the current year. But for next year, um, we felt that the conservative approach would be to keep this at four hundred and fifty thousand, just because um, Bridge Hampton's contracts are really never set in stone. It's based on what their needs are year to year. So um, we never want to, you know, we never want to count on that revenue coming in when, when it may not for next year. So we really kept that rev- revenue line flat. Um, and you can see the, the top of the slide is the current contracts. The middle of the slide is our revenue budget and what we've actually collected. So we have each year collected a little more than what we budgeted.
And I think, I think the most important number here is the bottom right number, uh, if I can see, thirty-three point one four. So that means roughly one-third of the budget is funded by these IMAs. And most of those runs, as Jennifer has told multiple times, it's happened anyway. So in other words, our buses are running these routes, and we're just adding students on the buses where we're already going there. So to fund thirty-three percent of your budget that way is significant.
And it's probably actually going to be more, because when I, when you look at the, when you look at what happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had thirty-seven percent of our transportation budget supported by those contracts. When you look at twenty-two, twenty-three projected and budget, I'm using the budgeted expenditures, I'm not using actual expenditures. Actual expenditures are usually lower than budgeted expenditures. So this is definitely going to be higher for the current year and for next year. It's probably going to be even closer to the thirty-seven percent the way it was last year. So um, that is a huge benefit for us to be able to generate that additional money coming into the district.
And just another point related to that, so people understand, you, you know, we're having a transportation audit. But each spring, we have discussions with these districts like Wayne Scott or Sagaponic or Bridge Hampton. And we review the runs that we're doing and those that make sense for us and those that don't. And then have honest discussions with our counterparts about whether to continue based on whether it's something that fits within something we're already doing, or something that's additional that economically doesn't make sense for us.
Yes, our transportation contracts are year to year, they're not multi-year. So we're not basically, um, you know, tied to those contracts. And we do do an analysis at the end of the year to see whether or not we did, we see, we did make money off of them. We have made money every year. Um, and that projection is based also on a two and a half percent increase to what our current rates are. So now that we've talked about the revenue side, and of course, I want everyone to know that the, these numbers are, as of today, um, we are going to get legislative runs for these state aid numbers. I am waiting on one more factor on our tax levy limit that may change the percentage slightly, um, but not, not by a lot. So um, when we do our next budget presentation on March sixth, we might show some changes based on additional information that comes in from now until then. But now we're going to focus on the budget side. So we talked about the revenue side, and now we need to look at our budget side. And why is our budget going up and why is it increasing? And we're going to go through, we're going to start with transportation, because we just talked about the transportation revenue that comes in. Now that, on the budget side, this includes all the costs for equipment, material supplies, contractual costs, which is mainly fuel, repairs to the buses. This doesn't include any salary benefits, because we discussed that on January twenty-third. Um, and the transportation salary lines were actually going down because of um, the use of less monitors going forward. So their big increase to their budget is really this thirty-five thousand dollar increase, which is right here. And that has to do with just fuel and diesel cost, diesel cost going up significantly, um, just year to year. So you know, this is something that we have not had to increase um, in the past few years. We've been keeping those lines fairly flat. And when I talk about facilities and talk about their utility costs, it's going to be pretty much the same story. Is all of their utility costs, we have remained flat going back like, you know, maybe four or five years. And this year now, unfortunately, we have to absorb a large increase, because all of our rates have gone up and all of our um, diesel costs have gone up. So we have thirty-five thousand dollar increase here. And then we have a um, increase for contracts. So some of our, so unfortunately, we can, we still need a contractor, we still need a contractor to um, do some of our athletic runs, do some other runs that we can't do with our own fleet, just because we do have a bus driver shortage, we just don't have enough drivers to go around. So we do contract out. These contracts are actually based on CPI. So the current year CPI on the transportation contracts, they went, they went up six point three percent. So that was the CPI. So going into the current year, we really didn't increase the budget too much. And we definitely did not increase the budget by six point um, three percent. But going into next year, we were able to leave um, contact transportation and field trips uh, flat. But we did have to make a slight increase for athletics. And you can see, based on spending, we are going to definitely hit um, that eighty-five thousand dollar number for next year.
Can I ask a quick question on this? So just because I know that we've circled around in the past and having the numbers right here kind of drills it home for me. Three seventy thousand, right, three hundred and seventy thousand, that's the number what we're spending on subcontracting to like Montauk Bus and stuff?
That's our, that's our budget. What we actually spent um, for twenty-one, twenty-two with two seventeen. And um, for the current year, we're probably going to be around that two hundred thousand range.
Okay, because we've always had these conversations of why are we doing all these shared contracts with other districts? So we can't handle everything on our own. But reality is, we're spending two hundred and seventeen thousand to subcontract. But we're making off of the shared contracts five hundred thousand a year.
Yes.
Okay, so it's worth it. That was, that's just what I wanted to make sure. I was finally looking at that.
In addition, but in addition, it's not a clean equation.
Yeah.
It always works out where we could, like out of necessity, we have to contract out.
Yeah, yes, I get that. I just wanted to make sure, like, we, I realize they're not apples to apples. But this understanding that no matter how we do it, this is a net win, net gain to do the shared contract, regardless of the fact that we have to subcontract.
Yeah, because those drivers, as Jeff explained, really all of our Bridge Hampton runs and Sagaponic runs, these are all shared runs. So we have to go there anyway. This is not really, it doesn't really cost us anything on our end. Um, the only runs that aren't shared, and we do have two Wayne Scott runs, that we have two dedicated drivers for. But those, the revenue that we bring in from the Wayne Scott runs more than pays for any, anything that we would need from the contractor. Um, and then we have a, a small increase, just four thousand dollars here in contractual costs. And this is really everything from um, bus physical to repair and maintenance costs on our buses. And this is um, just a small increase just because of inflation. And we felt that we really just needed to increase that line slightly. So now I'm going to go through the facilities budget. And you are going to see that when we go through facilities, we have two, we have two separate accounts really, uh, or two separate departments. The operation of plant department, and then we also have maintenance of plants. And um, you'll see overall, there is a fairly large increase. And um you'll see overall, there is a fairly large increase for facilities overall. And we're gonna go through all those increases. Um, right now, so we have uh the first increase you'll see is this forty-five thousand dollar increase and that's for equipment. So for the current year, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for equipment for the facilities department and next year we budgeted seventy-five thousand. And the real reason for that is because we really need to replace one of the trucks we have. We have two um vehicles that have files on them and one of them, we have some pictures later on that will show you, um, really needs to be replaced. It's basically getting rusted out and rotted out. It's two hundred, two thousand eight four. Um, so the cost of the four is actually, we're, we're budgeting sixty-five thousand for the cost of the four. But the um dollar change to the budget is, is actually forty-five thousand year to year change. Um, the next line you'll see contractual is seventeen thousand seven hundred. And this is really also inflationary um increases to all of our service contracts. Um, you know, the exterminator, everyone who comes in throughout the year, um code enforcement costs. Um, we definitely felt that that had to get, get increased based on current year spending. Um, you know, based on current year spending, we're already at sixty-two thousand. We only budgeted seventy-two seven, so we know that we had to increase that line. Um, if you go down now to, this is ten thousand dollars for fuel. All the way down to this ten thousand dollars, this is all utilities. This is all uh fuel, oil, electricity and gas. And that really is um a, a rather large increase. So all of our increases to utilities right now um in the facilities budget comes out to ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. And you'll see on tonight agenda, there's actually a budget transfer going into the um San Harbor Learning Center line for electricity because um our costs have gone up significantly and we had to actually transfer money into that account. So we have a ninety-six thousand five hundred dollar increase um in his budget, just for utilities. And then just going down even further. We have um, this is alarms, this is what we pay for all of our alarms. Um, going into the current year, we ended up changing vendors for our alarm systems. Um, we had a lot of problems in the past with the alarms and we went to the vendor who's, who's, who's currently managing all of our alarm systems, video cameras, security cameras, software for the alarms. Um, and we didn't even incorporate the additional cost in the current year budget. And if you remember, I think it was back in um maybe it was like July, we had a budget transfer going into this line just to pay for those costs. So we knew that we had to increase that by about thirty-one thousand to cover all of our um service contracts related to security systems and alarms. And then um we have also our architects, engineers and those professional service costs that are also going up year to year. Um, the maintenance of plants. We have um a little bit smaller dollar increases just because utilities aren't paid out of here, but this is really everything we pay to me, um, we pay to maintain the plant. I just wanna draw your attention to the uh special project line here. So currently we had a hundred thousand dollars set aside for special projects. For next year, um, we're increasing that slightly, but it's really remaining at a hundred thousand dollars. And what those special projects entail is a um to replace a lot of the flooring that's in the hallways. And that flooring is actually on our visual building inspection also that went up to F E D. So we'll be addressing some of our flooring um issues and we're also going to be replacing a cast iron pipe um in our boiler room that is leaking and is in desperate need of repair. And we also are going to be, um, we received requests from students and um teachers to uh actually add another basketball court um in the back of the building. And because our septic systems are underneath there, we weren't able to add one. But we did receive a quote to uh expand the current one we have and refinish the current one. Because the, the um, the current one we have is really in need to repair and it is a safety issue. But um that was thirty thousand dollars to expand that court and also um get that refinished. And that would be something that we could uh do over the summer and would be ready for September. And we would have, uh, that would be a huge benefit, of course, to all the students in the building. That use that court uh every day.
Quick question on the slide before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the truck that you wanted to get or that's in disrespect, what's the reason why that's like an included in budget line item versus a ballot like we do for school buses?
Um, because it really is just considered an equipment item. We don't need voter approval for it because we, uh, the funding is included in the budget. We're not, with the buses, we usually use a bus reserve to pay for the buses.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So because it's a reserve, we
I just, that was an educational point for me.
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, so that's what makes up the hundred thousand. And then we do have um a small increase to their contractual line. We also have a small increase to their grounds maintenance line and these are really inflationary increases and the supply line also. So we're gonna recap. And, oh no, first we're gonna talk about the transfer capital. So in our tax levy limit, I did mention that we had to transfer capital as a capital solution this year. But we were gonna earmark three hundred thousand dollars worth of current year surplus to pay for that. This is what um it looks like in the budget. It basically is part of our transfers at the end of the budget. And you can see we did not have a transfer to capital in the current year and we did not have one in the previous year. So this three hundred thousand dollars would be set aside to renovate four bathrooms in Pearson. Um, the bathrooms are over twenty years old. It would be a full gut of all the bath, of those bathrooms. And um this is another health and safety project that we're trying to address through the budget process versus going out and adding this to a bond or um if we're using one of our reserves to pay for this. So this is something that um we're just trying to make some headway on when we talk about our long-range facility plan. And this is um really a recap of the increases to the facilities and maintenance budget. Um, the total increase comes out to two hundred and thirty-four thousand four eighty-four. Um, and you can see the pictures of the truck on the bottom. Uh, it's a two thousand eight Ford and you can see just the whole rotted out bottom of the truck is basically going to just fall apart. And uh, like I said, that increase is forty-five thousand, but truck cost about sixty-five thousand. Utilities, we have the ninety-six thousand five hundred dollar increase for utilities. And then, of course, we're gonna have an increase because of inflation, because of rising costs in um contractual costs, professional service fees and materials and supplies of just under seventy-three thousand dollars. So out of all the three areas that we were going um to review tonight, this is really the biggest uh, the area where you'll see the most increased. Technology is up next. And you'll see most of everything in technology is um remaining flat. There's a small decrease in some of the areas and there's slight increases in other areas, but overall the technology budget is going down by three percent. Um, and we are gonna focus more on technology when we talk about the BOSI budget. So the BOSI budget is gonna be presented on April third. Right now, we don't even have, I don't have my BOSI budget increases yet. Um, we haven't sent those out yet. But uh most of our technology purchases now are done through BOSIs just so that we can get that aid and we could be in compliance with that law. So we're gonna talk, delve deeper into that area um on April third. And then um we need to talk about the capital reserve that we mentioned um during our fund balance presentation in December. And we also mentioned it during the last budget presentation, um, the need for a capital reserve to pay for technology, equipment purchases, security systems, infrastructure upgrades. Um, in the past, we've never added these items to the budget. Um, some of these items cost upwards of a million dollars for one area. And we've never been able to add this um to, to the budget. We've never had enough funds in the budget to address these needs. But uh this is the list that Mr. Fisher did put together and um these are things that are gonna have to be replaced or um upgraded. And I don't know, Mr. Fisher, if you wanna spend a little bit of time explaining if some of this, what some of this is?
Sure, um, each of the um the wiring closets throughout um each of the buildings um that are comprised of data switches, all the, all the wiring is connected to the data switches. The data switches are, probably may need to be um upgraded or uh actually replaced um just because they're out of life as far as the manufacturer is concerned. And um there are newer switches that can um be more efficient for us to um to use. So we want to replace some of the older ones, but we're also looking at adding some redundancy to the main core data switch, which is uh housed over here. Um, just in the event of emergencies that we have um had a good redundancy. We're, we're also looking at, um, when we look at replacing some of the switches and updating the four. Um, we have to then look at the cabling that runs between deposits, which is old fiber optic cable at this point. There's much more modern uh technology available uh that uses fiber optic cables to connect deposits. So we would wanna consider upgrading the wiring at the same time as um replacing the data switches. We also want to um take a look at proper ventilation. If we don't spend all this money on new data uh switches in our closets, we wanna make sure that we have proper ventilation to keep our money cool and efficiently and uh maintain the, the longest lifespan as possible. And um, one of the other things that I've been investigating is adding a redundant internet connection to the district since we rely so heavily upon the internet for our day-to-day operations, both administratively and instructionally. I think it makes sense for us at this point to um explore the possibility of getting a redundant internet connection so that in the eventual failure of our primary connection, we still have connectivity to the internet. There's also um a SIM uh solution that's available that's used by many companies that will help organize all of the various um logs and data that we're getting on a regular basis and help us to respond to security press. That system basically makes it easy for us to sit through it and organize it, send us alerts in a timely fashion, and it is something that our um auditing firm that is looking at our um cybersecurity um systems this year has recommended that we, we invest in. And then, and as Jennifer mentioned also, uh, we're looking at the various um camera and security systems throughout the district that we wanna um consider making improvements to that as well. And in an ideal world, um, both for the technology and just for general use, um, none of the buildings have generators for, for uh power pillars and uh unfortunately, we do experience dips in power and failures on a regular basis. And sometimes it's not even the um, the drop in power that can be problematic. It's when the power comes back that it could actually damage a lot of our equipment. So um I really would like to, to be prepared for uh a situation like that. And then of course, technology is always changing, so we don't know exactly what we're planning for, but we do know that there will be technology needs in the future. So we wanna make sure that we're upfront about the fact that this will be evolving and there will be additional needs um as aggressive on the project.
So we really wanna start saving money now for all of these things that need to get done in the, in the upcoming years. And the best way to do that is to have a capital reserve. So we were able to use our, our um repair reserve funds this year for our masonry project. We were able to use it for our middle school group project. So we were able to get these things done without affecting the tax levy and without having an impact on our budget. So we are hoping that voters in May would approve a proposition for us to establish a capital reserve just for these reasons. Um, the wording here is just draft wording. Our lawyers are working on the exact wording of the proposition and um I'll be coming back to the board with that. And this reserve, if we establish it and if we are able to invest and put surplus funds in it every year, it would never have an impact on the um school tax levy. So there would be no impact on the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget or tax levy if the voters did approve um this reserve.
Uh, I just have a question about it. Um, I fully support that we need this and if we can establish a reserve and, and we have surplus to put in it, that, that all makes sense. Um, I just wanna make sure we're not delaying anything that needs to get done based on the fact that we're waiting to create a reserve and then waiting to put money into it and then waiting to take money out of it.
No, I think we're in a really good place. I mean, this year alone too, we were able to get a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars um from the Smart Schools Fund. And um we're working with the state now on getting our application approved. So that also helped us um with some of the items that we needed for the current year. But I think that um if we needed to do anything immediately, then we would have definitely been able to somehow incorporate it into the budget process. So I think that if we were able to get this approved in May, we were able to um put some surplus funds in it in June. Next May, we can have a proposition already using some of that money and already have a project in place, which would cost the taxpayers nothing at that point.
And then, yeah, so then once we establish reserves, again, gonna require a taxpayer vote to get any money out of it.
Yes, so an expenditure from this reserve fund must be authorized by the district voters. So once we start funding it, we can start using it and then we could go ahead and, and replenish it up to that ten million dollars. But um is there anything else she wanted to add, uh, Mr. Fisher? And this is just a recap of everything we discussed tonight and everything we discussed on January twenty-third. I wanted to break down the budget to budget increase a little bit and make it a little easier to understand. Um, the last meeting, we did go through employee benefits and salaries. So we did talk about um almost a million dollar increase in our budget just for employee benefits related to health insurance. So our health insurance rates went up significantly and that's where you see that nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, our salaries, salaries going into next year, our salary budget is only increasing by one point three four percent. So our salary budget um right now is increasing by three hundred and forty-six thousand eight fifty-six. Um, we talked tonight about that transfer to capital for the bathroom renovations of the three hundred thousand. Um, we also talked um about these inflationary increases that we know we're gonna have to absorb in next year's budget. I mean, we talked about inflation being eight percent and um right now we have about two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars worth of increases in the budget for inflation and that's, that's actually um about half a percent increase overall uh to our budget. Uh, last meeting, we talked about our borrowing costs and how high they've been and um our tax anticipation note. We had to increase that budget line by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to cover our tan borrowing every year. Um, this is utilities of fuel. So we talked about the um ninety-six thousand five hundred dollar increase in the facilities budget for utilities. But we also had to add to that the diesel and gas fuel that we're using for the transportation department. So overall, just for utilities and fuel, we're seeing an increase of one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And then the new facilities truck would increase that equipment budget by forty-five thousand. So this is really a rough breakdown as of today of what would make up that budget to budget increase because it is much larger than usual. Um, but I do have to say, when you go back and look at our budgets for a lot of these areas, you'll see that we have not increased these areas in, in many years. So you'll see our utility lines remain flat for years. Um, we have not had a transfer of capital in years. So this is something that we definitely need to do. But we are going to try and um maintain that two percent tax levy increase. So we wanna stay within that two percent. Um, we don't anticipate very large changes going forward, but there definitely will be some increases and decreases that we'll go through and we'll review with you um over, over time until the budget's backed on April nineteenth. And the next meeting we're gonna have is on March sixth and we're gonna go through the uh learning center budget and the elementary school budget. We're gonna give you an update if anything changed with salaries and um all of these presentations and the calendar and everything is available online. And you can, anyone can access the information and contact me if they, they have any questions.
Nice question.
Mm-hmm.
We, in previous years, I thought we had different options of tax levy limits increases.
Uh, not since I've been here.
What would the, what would those options make? Let me preface that question by saying obviously you've done an amazing job and the finance are in great shape. And the fact that that's all that's proposed is really impressive. I'm just wondering though, what would it look like if it was one percent?
Well, if you, this is what you can do. So first of all, on the budget side, if you wanted to um decrease in any way, then you would have to, like, you could say, we're not buying an installation truck next year, even though we really need one. You could just say, we're not gonna get it next year, maybe a year after that. So that would, that would be a forty-five thousand. You could go through these areas and you can definitely say, well, we're not doing that. We're not doing, we're not, you know.
Couldn't we also not, like, years where we budget and don't spend that and then carry the same budget number over, we could reduce it for the following year, bring down the total budget.
This is the other area. So if you
That we carry, we put in forty and we don't spend forty, we put forty the next year, but like we could reduce that, bring that number down to Alex's point.
Well, what you can do is, because you know, we, we're basically doing zero-based budgeting here. So we're basically starting from zero every year and we're moving up. There's one other budget that are prepared out there where they just increase everything by two percent, increase everything by five percent. We do have rhyme and reason for every single budget increase that, that we have. So, so this is what we really need budget-wise, but what you could do is this is appropriate a fund balance right here. Right now, we have it at four hundred and ninety-one thousand one forty-five. I can tell you right now that that number could be higher. So if you, we will have more surplus this year than that four ninety-one. So you can increase the four ninety-one, right? You could decrease the tax levy, but then you are gonna have less money to put in your reserves at the end of the year.
What's the dollar number? Is it one or one?
So the, the one percent of the tax levy is, is um right down here. Sorry, so you've got two percent, the two percent of the twenty-six, the one percent is about four hundred and twelve.
But, but bear in mind, if you do that one year though, then it reverberates through subsequent years.
We're already leaving money on the table. I mean, the state is basically telling us that you can levy up to We're already leaving money on the table. I mean, the state is basically telling us that you can levy up to four point. One five percent this year.
We have a million plus in surplus every year, so if we're responsible, we shouldn't do that.
Exactly.
Leave money on gay boys, I'm not sure.
The tax levy limit, well, I can tell you, there are some districts out there who believe in taxing up to eleven, because they know that in the future they may need those.
But leaving money on the table.
Ninety-one thousand is is the difference right now.
One way to phrase it, another way to phrase it is leaving money in people's. Accounts is supposed to take it from them. And, okay, I'd like to see what one or one and a half.
Well, I can tell you what we would do is we could increase the tax levy to one percent, so then that would be um one percent tax levy. And this would be four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And then what we would do is we would add four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to the appropriated fund balance. And that would be four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars left that would go into your reserves at the end of the year.
Well, just maybe you didn't do it, but in in previous years, we had.
Why don't, why don't I, rather than belabor this, why don't we come back with the ones, like the one eight-five, one six-five, one.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that.
And and just go back to where um you have the benefits and the salaries, like uh that that screen is the last screen.
Yeah, I have to tell you, when it comes to what is within our control, very little of 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 this chart.
Benefits is out of our control.
Salaries are set in stone, they're part of the contract.
Bathroom renovation, you can, I mean, it's a transfer, but.
You could definitely use less, you could not use three hundred thousand dollars worth of surplus.
Right.
For the bathroom.
But the education facilities committee did recommend that.
Yes, those are the health and safety items.
Well, I think what Brian, what Brian and Alex are saying, and I understand it is. That cut it a little closer in terms of some of the balances that we have at the end of the year. Um, which is a bit of a, a bit of a roller dice, but.
Not only have healthy reserves.
Yeah.
Um, it's huge. That's, that's a huge increase, um pulling five hundred thousand dollars out of our um retirement contribution reserve. So that was, that was huge.
And the four point seven five that the state's recommended as the upper cap, is that very high compared to historical?
Uh, it is, it's very high for us, um and it is driven by the uh growth factor. Because our our tax base has grown so much and it's driven by the two percent um levy growth factor. So you've got the tax base growth factor of two, two point one seven, you've got the levy growth factor of two percent. So every, all of the other numbers are fairly the same from year to year, so that's really what's driving the larger.
Driving it because there are more homes here.
Yes.
And then in theory, there could be more children.
Yes, definitely.
What, um, so when you are saying that if you reduced it by four hundred thousand, there would be four hundred thousand less to put in reserves. What, is that what you were thinking you'd put in that new securities and technology reserve?
Well, I think that at the end of the year, we were definitely, I mean, I can tell you right now, if you look at the transportation, um not the transportation, the the um tuition revenue here. Um, I'm projecting at the end of the year, we're gonna have nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars just from non-recent tuition. That is really money that I felt could go into the technology reserve.
Cause my thought is, rather than having stuff in reserve that we then, surplus that we transfer in reserve. Why wouldn't we then just add that to the ballot when we establish the reserve, saying we establish reserve and we establish? Money, that way the taxpayers can decide if a certain amount of money is going into a reserve, but we can then, like, we can keep the.
We don't know, we don't know how much we're gonna have, we're not gonna know what we have left until the end of the year.
Right, that's why I'm saying though. You're saying that right now, you're saying, right, this, this new reserve has no impact on taxpayers, but. If we wanted to be, right, but I'm just saying, like, if we want, we could say, we wanna establish a reserve and we wanna add five hundred thousand dollars to it. Taxpayer, that will actually come out of taxpayers' money, like. Yes or no, so that people could then actually have a say on that rather than.
Budget by whatever money you wanna put in a reserve.
Yeah.
If you wanna put a million dollars in the capital reserve next year.
Out of the budget and make it separate line item. We establish an amount. Can't do it separately like a bus.
No, so this would be. Yeah, so this, you. This would be another item on this list, appropriative reserves. And you could add as much as you want to your reserves through the budget process. But your budget-to-budget increase would be that much higher and then you would have to fund that somehow.
So where we, where we left it, I I think you guys are okay with this, is we're gonna, I'm gonna come back to you after working with Jennifer this week. With adjusted tax levy numbers and the related explanations as to how we arrived there.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah, it's fine. And we'll give you some feedback and some, we'll give you some charts as to what we've done in the past.
Good, thanks, Jennifer.
You are welcome.
What's next?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh Jennifer, you are.
That was a great presentation.
Yeah.
Thanks, it was, thank you.
Um, may I have a motion for some consent, it's been the item seven point through uh two point through seven point two four.
So moved.
Discussion? Anybody have any questions on the updated ventilator? No, no. Proving, rejecting, approving, rejecting, and all approving, okay? Uh, thank you to Rich and Trust, whoever was able to do that, I heard it was fabulous. If there's no other discussion, um Mary, I don't think.
Mary, I go die, my computer died.
That's unanimous.
Great, uh does anybody have any items for discussions? Okay. Uh, public input number two. And again, same rules that we spoke of in public input number one. Remain for public input number two. If there was anybody in public input two, would like to know, please do so now. No? Okay, great. Uh, may I have a motion to convene to executive session to discuss contracts?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Oh, there's a, there's a, there's a woman who I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, oh. That's a, I didn't see, I'm sorry, come up with that. You want, yes, that'd be great. Oh, yeah, we're gonna table executive session right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I apologize, I didn't see your hand.
Um, my name's Laura Arbox. I am a twenty, over twenty-year resident and taxpayer of this village. Um, I love this village. I've raised three children here. Um, still raising them. And I wanted to talk about Mars and Lots. Um, I have, it's kind of twofold. I have some comments that I'm sure you've heard before. Um, but I'm gonna reiterate them, it's certainly concerns of mine. And then I have um some questions. The comments, um, so, so I was a practicing architect and urban designer for twenty-eight years. And when I look at the plan, it, I've never seen anything like it. I've never seen putting a soccer field like that or any field of that size. In the middle of a residential fabric. Um, that exists, existing historic, the density of that residential fabric. To then disrupt it with this kind of flat field. Goes against any urban design or planning I have ever seen. Um, that said, I also believe that the village needs to do a comprehensive strategic planning. Um, plan for the whole village. Um, there's been a sum done at the waterfront, but I think we need to put the whole village before one could ever develop the Mars and Lots. Need to understand it as a comprehensive whole. Um. I also wanna mention, I don't think um as a mother and as someone who cares about the environment. Um, I don't like, I don't think it's a good lesson that we're teaching our children. Um, to take a lot like that, tear down the trees, to destroy ecosystems. Um, and such in in today's climate change world. Um, and I think that there's many other things that could be done that would actually help educate children about climate change. Um, I'm also concerned that there's so few to 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 put a field there. The use of so few children um for such a limited also timeframe. Versus using that space for um more members of the community. And more times of the year just makes sense for the amount of real estate that it is. Um, let me just look at my notes a minute, I'm not used to speaking publicly. Um, I also, these were the, those are my main comments, um. Oh, I'm also concerned about the watershed. I I do know that the water flows right to there, I've seen it. It all cap, is captured there.
Laura, thirty, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, I'm gonna switch to something else, okay? So what is the plan for Mash Hasham Uit and the mud field, I'd like to call it, behind um Pearson? Will the taxpayers um be asked to pay for this as well in addition? And when will we be asked to pay for that?
Laura, could you sign your name and thank you so much?
About Mash?
Yeah.
So with regard to Mash Hasham Uit, the um, the plan that was articulated to the public was when Marsden. Uh, became an option, which was in early fall, we said we were hitting pause. On the planned vote, which was originally scheduled for November third. Until we really had some clarity on whether or not we were moving forward with Marsden. And while that um process is taking place in terms of the Marsden, whether we're gonna get it or not. We have met with Mash Hasham Uit Park and explored five different options with them. From the original plan, which was gonna be voted on on November third, to scale down plans. That reflect the fact that we have an additional field potentially on Marsden, which would then necessitate less of renovation at Mash Park. And so the timing of it, hopefully, um, there's a lot of things that need to work out. But if we were to uh acquire um Marsden in a timely fashion and we were able to. Um, comply with the notification requirements would be to bring a vote for the renovation plan. For Mash Hasham Uit and the capital improvement plan to Marsden at one time, hopefully in the spring. But there's a lot of things that need to happen between now and then.
And the mud field, is that what you're talking about?
Well, the mud field uh is really a uh a product of a few things. Number one, overuse. Because if we don't let the field rest, uh they don't have a time to be healthy. I'm not a horticulturalist, but that's what I hear from landscape architects. More knowledgeable than myself. So hopefully, if we have another field that we can use, we can let that rest. And then um we have been listening to presenters that have been talking about new systems. And drainage systems that might be applicable to something like our backfield. That makes it much less likely that you would have a, quote, mud pit. Um, but rather a healthy field, so we're gonna be exploring those things moving forward.
Okay, so I'm, I'm done. I just, I just wanna say, I don't think it makes any sense to me. Be combining Mash Hasham Uit plans with Marsen plans, that that just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did.
Okay, um. Was there a motion? I tabled it, we're untabled.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion?
There you go. Mary, you got the motion in a second over there?
I have from Ron and maybe from Brian.
Okay, great, thanks. Oh, I just, I just closed my computer. Gross.
I got Brian, I got Alex, I got Andy. That's unanimous.
And when we come out of executive session, we'll be just closing the meeting, there'll be no action taken, so, thank you.